The open meeting is located on the wall here, down here at this end. The agenda consists of four items and the first, well, we'll first go around and say who's here. Mary Ann Morrison, County Board.
Jill Loren, County Finance Director.
Mark Craft, County Commissioner.
Mike Warnick, Attorney Attorney.
Diane Carlson, Deputy County Administrator.
Marco Sammartine, County Labor.
Dan Ash, Douglas County Clerk.
Sherry Larson, County Clerk's Office.
Kim Bolo, County Clerk's Office.
Chris Rogers, County Board.
Patrick Fleming, Delft County District Justice.
How do you do that?
County Board.
Mike Boyle, Mr. Baller.
Oh, no, no, I was about to say that.
Aren't you supposed to be in Washington?
District one. District one.
Pete McBoyle, County Commission.
God, I wasn't supposed to say that.
We have one guest in the back here. Larry?
Yes.
Well, aren't you a guest?
Larry, you're not allowed to speak. No, you're.
Yeah.
I'm being good, I don't know.
I don't think so.
He already knew that.
Okay.
A citizen, I guess I should have said rather than a guest. Anyway, we have, the first item is the discussion of health insurance coverage for dependents up to age thirty. And so, Mike or Patrick, who wants to start and you want to?
Go ahead.
Okay. So, in the health insurance plan, I always thought it was that you can cover someone up to age twenty-six because that's the federal law, right? Well, apparently we have, we have in our health insurance plan the ability to cover dependents up to age thirty. But my understanding is that our plan says if you're going to cover them up to age thirty, between the ages of twenty-six and thirty, you as the holder of the policy have to pay the full rate for that. So, if it's eight hundred bucks a month for single coverage, the total with the county and the employee paid combined, the employee has to pay that whole rate. Apparently, that has not been happening. So, we have a number of dependents, both dependents of employees and dependents of retirees, who are allowed to be up to age thirty, but they're being treated the same as all other employees. So, they only have to pay the single rate. So, we have really two issues. One, you know, we really probably need to be requiring them to pay the rate as our plan appears to indicate. And then, the other question that begs the question, do we want to continue to allow coverage up to age thirty or do you want to go back to age twenty-six? Ah, yeah. You want to expand it all on that?
No, that's it.
Karen, did I, Karen, do you want to?
Well, the plan, the plan for 2019 doesn't state that they have to pay the full single premium.
That's what I'm saying is that the plan, so what you're saying is that the plan allows for them to just?
To stay on their, on their parents' coverage.
Well, the draft that I got, it must have been 2018.
It was 2018. It was the wrong one. Mm-hmm.
So, who changed the plan?
Yeah. Did you have to change most of the board's?
Well, it's always been paid for. We've always paid for it. The 2018 plan was wrong and that wording was in there from, that was a move over and error by Blue Cross Blue Shield when they published our plan and we did not catch it. So, since twenty, since the bill, since LB-551 was passed, the county has never charged an employee for the, the single adult unsubsidized premium. They've never charged that to the employee. They've just been covered under the tier coverage that would apply. And in speaking with Kathy Adair, she's indicating this was discussed with the board. We're still trying to find a resolution, but she's saying that when the bill was passed in 2010 that this was discussed. She believes there's a resolution that was passed. I don't know. We're still trying to narrow that down. But since that time, I can tell you consistently since the bill was passed, the county has never charged an employee with a dependent over the age of twenty-six an unsubsidized premium. They've just covered it if the, if the, they had family coverage, they just kept the person covered under the family coverage. If they had employee plus children, they just continued to coverage the employee under employee plus children.
Mike?
Until what age?
Until they re, and, and, once they-
Thirty-six or thirty?
Thirty.
Okay. Well, I can't imagine us passing that, to tell you the truth. So, I'd like to know, how many, how many young adults up to thirty are we covering? And are there any who have serious illnesses?
Yes.
There's fifty.
Fifty?
Fifty, there's some additional ones who are disabled.
Disabled. And, and, and those indiv, yeah. And that's not an issue because we have to-
Well, that, that's not part of it.
Yeah, we have to continue to cover those.
Just a second before we fly through this. Are the disabled ones covered by this policy?
Yes.
Well, I, I think under the circumstances, are there, how many are there? Fifty, okay. And I don't know if it's, if they're covered. It seems to me like we're not going to continue the coverage. I don't know how in the world we can get out of it. And we also must have promulgated the thirty-year age somewhere because how else would they know it?
I, I remember when the Affordable Care Act came out and it, and it came out until, and extended it to twenty-six.
Yeah.
And we talked about that. And at that time, it was never clear that we were covering anyone over the age of twenty-six. And we were having the discussion, well, this is the law, we'll be consistent with the law.
Well, now, we got it.
Okay, wait a minute. Mike, not that-
How did we get to, then how did these fifty people get coverage? Somebody told them that they were covered till thirty and I don't really, we can't help what we intended to do. This is what we did, apparently. There's fifty people out there, some disabled, and I really don't think we have to be cutting the coverage. I don't know how old they are or where we're headed or, I don't see how we can suddenly yank their coverage. First of all, unethical if we told them we would cover you till you're thirty.
I don't think the question is not covering them.
Okay.
I think it's that they have to pay for it if they're over twenty-six.
Well-
Twenty-six and over, then, then that employee or the, but they pay for it.
Well, except we're not- Two, until thirty.
Right.
Except we told them they were covered till thirty.
Well, I dispute that because I don't ever remember telling them.
But there's no resolution.
So-
Okay, Patrick?
I'm going to say that one thing that everybody hates to hear, but it may be that we're stuck because we might have to negotiate any change. Would he and Diane, do you think from a, would we have to negotiate since it's part of our plan? Well, effectively, it's become part of our plan.
Well, what I've heard, what I heard is that it's been the practice, that it's been actually defined in some plans, but not the most recent one of 2019, right? And that one, it was actually different than our practice, but, you know, we continue the, the practice. Correct. I don't know that it's something that needs to be negotiated, that someone might claim it needs to be negotiated. We've had examples of that, but-
So, and when we were talking about making the pay full rate for it?
And just to be clear, that, that up to twenty-six is the ACA.
Right.
The up to thirty is a state law that was put into place. And it's a state law that's-
That allows you to do it.
Yeah. So, so the state law came before the ACA. Mm-hmm. So, it was in, we had, you know, a policy, a practice, whatever, because the state law kind of came out that we knew that we needed to offer this coverage or it was available to people who fit that category. But at that time, apparently-
It said you had to offer it, but it didn't say they had to be included, right?
The state law, the state law specifically states you can charge them for it, right? Yeah, it says may. It says you may charge them. We, my understanding, we can't find a resolution or anything that showed that the board either was told about it or took action on it. But at any rate, the HR department, this was available to people when they went through open enrollment. So, I don't know if nothing caught the fact that, say I had a kid who turned, was on my health plan, you know, and they turned twenty-two or whatever, twenty-six, whatever the magic number.
Twenty-six.
And I'm still signing up for family and it goes through the system. Maybe that's just how it worked. I mean, I don't know that anybody said that people actually knew, you know, or something.
There's, here's, I'm sorry. There's a couple of catches. When we submit a file, Blue Cross Blue Shield requests that form. And that form is that employee is attesting that their dependent who is over the age of twenty-six cannot afford medical insurance on their own. So, it is stating they cannot-
How do you justify that? I mean, how do you determine that? They can't afford it. My daughter's in some, they can't afford it.
So, there's a couple of things that, there's some questions that they're supposed to be like, this employ, is the dependent still in school full-time? Is the dependent at a job that does not afford them affordable healthcare insurance? So, if the, the dependent is working a minimum wage job and they have access to health centers, but it takes them below the poverty level, depending to the state poverty level, which is up to one hundred and twenty-seven percent above the poverty level, then that's not affordable for them. So, the state put that in so that they could afford, that parents could continue to afford that insurance. So, that we're not allowed to cover dependents who live in a different state. So, if they're away at college in a different state, they're not covered because they have to remain in the state of Nebraska. So, there were some catches with that when they signed that, for that form. Correct, Mike?
I, I don't recall seeing anything on, when asking that.
Yeah, because there's like, my, not getting insurance through any other means or something like that. So-
But how do they know? Okay, wait a minute.
Yeah, that's, I don't think they, there's any definition of what dependency is.
Karen and Mike, Mr. Boyle?
Yeah, LB-551. And we have an opinion letter that our department got from, from the county attorney's office. And the, the requirements that they have to be able to reach this coverage is they have to reside in the state of Nebraska. They cannot have coverage elsewhere. So, if they're working and have access to coverage, they're not eligible for this coverage if they're over the age of thirty.
So, over the age of what?
Or over the age of twenty-six. Two-thirty. Excuse me. And so, there is a document, as Colleen alluded to, that the employees have to complete. It's submitted to Blue Cross Blue Shield, who's our third-party administrator. And then, there's also another form that is submitted for those who are disabled. We don't get a copy of that form because it has a very specific information about those who are disabled regarding their particular health condition. That goes directly from the employee to the Blue Cross Blue Shield office. And then, they determine if the person can stay on the coverage over the age of thirty because they're disabled. My understanding and the process is, and has been, and this is long before I was here as a director because I didn't come back till 2015. So, I'm relying on what was communicated to me by Kathy Adair, who was the prior person. And what she indicated to me is that when employees age off of our coverage, when they've aged off of our coverage or about to age off of our coverage at the age of twenty-six, she would notify those employees that they're, that they're, they have a dependent who is about to age off of the insurance. And at that point, she would offer them the opportunity to stay on the coverage if they met the requirements under here. So, if they're a student and they're living outside of the state of Nebraska or they're married or whatever. So, that's all I can tell you about the practice. And it's been consistently applied according to Kathy.
Mr. Boyle?
Well, I'd like to know, first of all, we're talking out here in the clouds someplace. I'd like to know, first of all, I know we can't project it into the future, but what are we, what are the losses that were, the expenses be paid already? And, you know, what is the dollar amount? Sometimes it turns out it's, you know, four thousand, twelve dollars and spending sixty-five thousand dollars. So, I'd like to know if we have any clue about what that is. The other thing I want to say is that from a legal point of view, I don't think we should, we can pull this coverage back because somewhere along, it's been approved by this board somehow, whether it's state law or whatever it is. Someplace, these people got the idea that they could do this. Now, if you could find somebody who's friendly to us and say, show us what you got from the county that said you could insure your kid till they're thirty, we see where, where in the world it came from, maybe. But you don't have fifty people signing up for coverage that doesn't exist. So, I mean, it exists and we approved it. So, that's the legal thing. And if we can find somebody, you know, if we know somebody's name and without violating HIPAA, say, show us, where'd you get this idea, you know? That'd be something we could do if it's a friend. And obviously, again, the numbers, it's not five people, it's fifty. So, where the hell that come from? So, anyway, it was on something that we communicated to them. The other thing, I think it's unethical, particularly when we have people who are ill to suddenly say, okay, I've got insurance. Sometimes groups make mistakes and that's what's happened. So, let's pass up to it and pay the thing and move on. Or find out how many are, you know, there. Commissioner, as a member of the public, what?
I know, but I'm wait, wait till the hands are done. Commissioner Morgan?
I was, maybe Karen was ahead and I don't want to-
No, it was you and then-
Okay. The only thing I think is, there's some of these people that are between twenty-six and thirty that are not ill, that are on the policy. My feeling is, you know, I'm twenty-eight, I would, but I'm on it. And I don't think it's fair to take me off if I, new people shouldn't be allowed. It should be passed at twenty-six, period. However, if you're already on it, I'm twenty-eight, I'm going to get to go to thirty the way it's been, period, because we set a precedent. And that's a fair way to do it. And that's the end of it.
Yeah.
Karen and then Larry and then Claire?
Okay. Well, just a couple of things. First of all, I want to fully disclose to this committee that I have in a child that is over the age of twenty-six that is on this policy. I personally do not care what is decided. She will have to muddle through however. But the issue is, is whether or not we can make the change. And I think we can effective January one, 2020, if the board is open to doing that because that's when the plan year changes. I was, when I came, when I came, when I was here employed the first time, I was informed, as all employees were during the benefit orientation, that children could stay on the policy until they were age thirty. So, when I came back, I went to Kathy when my daughter turned over twenty-six and said, I want to enroll. I wanted her to stay on the policy. So, but again, if the board feels that this is too costly, and I agree with Commissioner Boyle, we can, we have not, but we can look at how many claims we've had. And even though the claims may not, we're also potentially foregoing the premium that we would be receiving. And I think Mike had initially indicated that that might be of, the premium that we forgot, would forego in a year, would be equal to-
Four hundred and ninety thousand.
In one year.
One year, how much?
Four hundred and ninety.
Four hundred and ninety thousand dollars and that's a lot of money.
Premium?
So, I think that this is something that, you know, has to be taken seriously. And so, if we can make a change in January of 2020, if we don't think it's going to be a union issue, then I think that that's something we, we should seriously consider doing.
Larry and then Claire and then Mike?
Well, I'm hearing the words like hour implying that we're talking about county employees or dependents. But that, my question, first of all, has the federal law been changed? If not, you're being directed by the state? Or did you go down to the State House and request this? Because both constitutions say that you will not pass spatial laws for spatial groups in simple terms. So, therefore, it's another maybe constitutional issue. My grandsons cannot stay on the policies after age twenty-six. My granddaughters can. Why should your employee, your dependents be able to? That's more or less, and their residence in Omaha.
Claire?
I didn't realize that we offered this and I have a twenty-six-year-old son who is still on our policy and I suppose we've got to be off by March. I don't care if we offer it or not, but we've got to be consistent. If we're going to offer it, then they have to pay for it. I mean, no way in the world, even if we've inadvertently been paying for something we should have been, doesn't mean we have to continue it forever. We found our mistake, let's rectify it. Go ahead and offer it, but haven't paid the premium.
Mike?
Well, I think it's pretty, pretty straightforward. Kathy Adair is fairly the person who told you. So, she is responsible for it. She's not here anymore. We had the official from the department telling people, you can insure your children up till their age of thirty. That's the end of the discussion. Let's move on. We're wasting time. There's no way to get out of this legally, I don't think, or morally. And I, make a decision about whether you want to stop it at some time, which I think we should, but it's called a screw-up. That's all there is to it.
Joe?
Well, you know, I really think with the Affordable Care Act, that when they switched to twenty-six, that became the standard.
That makes no difference.
And I think, Mike, please, if we're going to be government, I think we should be leading by example. And I don't know why we would ever offer benefits that our taxpayers are not allowed to have in the private sector. It's showing favoritism. It's wrong. And I feel strongly about this, that we should eliminate it and do what Claire said.
You know what, Mike, may I follow up?
Okay.
It is, it is wrong to cut off the coverage of somebody that we promised we would pay, Joe. Don't be that way. We promised them, you've got insurance till you're thirty. And so, you can't now come back and say, okay-
It's not right for the taxpayer.
Okay, well, I'd like to use the word, but I shouldn't. It starts with F. We screwed up, okay? We screwed up. So, move on. We're wasting time. I got things I have to do this afternoon. This is nuts. I don't want to hear any more personal stories. Kathy Adair screwed up. Period. So, what I, what, yeah, what I think we should do next is ask for legal opinion
from the county attorney's office because, and the only reason I say that is because if we're going to do nothing, then maybe we don't need to. But if we're going to make any change, whether it's cutting it off at age twenty-six or making them pay, keeping it and making them pay the full rate, we need to make sure that there's no legal ramifications, Mike's saying, from having done this for the last several years, from, since 2010, apparently. What is that, you know, you hear words like past practice. You hear words like, you know, the promises that make. So, if we're gonna, if, if we're going to do it, we need to make sure that we have appropriate, strong legal foundation to do it. And that, the only way to do that really is to get a legal opinion.
Oh, I was, I, I don't think I need to add anything further. Thank you.
Well, I think that's the right direction to go. And I think that if people continue to work for, whether or not this board took a stance, what I think happened is exactly what Karen said. The bill passed. Kathy Adair took it upon herself to call employees and say, your child's going off. This bill's here, we're going to offer it till thirty, without the board even knowing that.
Yep.
So, in my opinion, the board didn't approve it and we're the policymaking board. End of story, period. So, I think that we have to give that opinion as to how do we move forward with any change, regardless of what it is. How do we move forwards with that? Commissioner, do that?
You're right on, and we have to be consistent. Whatever we do-
That's right.
You can't say, these people are grandfathered, they get free coverage, but nobody else gets it.
Right.
We cannot go there.
Right. Okay. So, Commissioner Ford?
I do think we have the grandfather. We offered it to them. So, if there's somebody-
We're still offering it.
Oh, I thought you said you can't grandfather.
No, we pay them.
But they pay.
But they pay for it.
Well, what'd we tell them? They didn't have to pay for it?
We don't know.
We don't know what's been told.
Well, okay, what'd they tell you? They had to pay for it, Karen or what?
For years, it was that you would just pay whatever tier you would be under. So, the fifty people that we have, if they, they may be paying employee plus child or they may be paying employee plus family premiums, but that, but that dependent that is over the age of twenty-six is not now or never has been asked to pay the single premium.
Well, you could, you could try it, but I think promises made or not promises made.
Which is, right, that, it is what the law allows.
I mean, again, we don't know how many people there are in this category, fifty, but I mean, how many are twenty-nine? How many of them are twenty-five or twenty-seven or whatever? I'd like more data on who we're dealing with. The other thing, I don't think we can renege on it. And I'd go ahead and get the county attorney's opinion.
I will ask for the first.
I don't, I don't think it makes any difference, Patrick. I think we have to stand with the stake that Kathy made. And we have an obligation and a responsibility to change the policy. So, let's make sure we do and make it clear that this is not going forward. And I don't think, you know, that's the end of it. But I think we have to pay up to, through thirty. I don't see how to get out of it legally or ethically.
Well, there's disagreement, so we'll have you talk to the county attorney.
But I think everyone probably agrees that people who have a disability should be cut out.
They have to by law in the state of Nebraska.
So, this isn't, all the people with disabilities, this is not about-
That, right.
Correct.
Right, exactly. Okay, anything else on this?
Permit it to your mom.
So, Joe, admit, say you're right. If I can.
Did you wonder why Colleen was making sure?
Yeah. Yeah. Wow.
Here, please.
Item two is an update from HR on, regarding the TRICARE health insurance. And if, who's going to give this? Colleen or Karen?
Colleen.
Colleen is?
Yes.
Okay. So, just kind of give a background before you give the update so everybody's-
So, employees who are retired military or active duty or in reserves are entitled to TRICARE insurance that's paid by the government. We also offer a supplement to help them cover their costs for their co-pays and their deductibles and out-of-pocket expenses. Since I came on, there's just only been like a blurb on the website about offering the TRICARE. We are now, I was able to secure some documents, to brochures for these individuals to show, to show like new hire orientation, to pass those out, to make sure that people who are going on leave know that they have this supplement to offer. So, it's, the brochures are on the website now and we're trying to get it out more to the employees, letting them know.
So, in doing that, so do we know like, how many military folks we have been employed by the county?
We, we have about seven percent that are either active or veterans.
Okay. And so, have we done an intentional reach-out to those that we know are military to give them this information in any way?
We will be as part of open enrollment this year. Yeah, because they can't really change during the middle of a plan year unless they have a qualifying event.
No, but here's my thing, is that you're bombarded at open enrollment with a whole lot of stuff and it's confusing. And if they don't know ahead of time that this is a possible benefit that they could sign up for so they can do a little bit of background work?
Yeah, we'll be sending something separate to them.
That's right.
Yes.
I think that would be a good thing to do so they can at least look at it prior to their actual sitting down and happen to do an open enrollment.
Yeah.
Also, during the cash and loan meetings, we had, we pointed out if you had military insurance and you're covered by the VA, we also offer a supplement that the cash and loan can help pay for. And we had a number of individuals who are on the county insurance and had the VA and they're like, oh, this is a bonus all the way. So, because the supplement's only sixty-five dollars a month, so.
All right, yeah.
Go ahead. Thanks, Larry.
Good. So, anyway, that's, I know this is funny because, you know, when I asked originally for it, we offered it, but then we weren't really offering it because it was just sitting there. And so, again, intentional is a small group of people really that we can reach out to and it's up to them, but it's an additional benefit for them if they so desire.
Question on that, though. It's not enough to be a veteran. Don't you have to be retired? I mean, you have to have served your twenty years or whatever. Just serve-
You have to be eligible for TRICARE under-
Okay. So, not all veterans are.
No. And we don't know that, but we'll still have to email, or we'll still, that email, we'll still have to notify those individuals by letter.
Okay, thank you.
Because we don't know what their service is.
Fine.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Any, thank you for that update. And actually, if there, if there are way to, to tell us after open enrollment, how many took advantage of it?
Yeah, we'll be able to know who enrolled.
Okay. Um, yeah.
Could I ask that we consider sending a resolution to the county board that we stopped insurance if we haven't already, that we don't pay over the age of twenty-six,
that we don't pay over the age of twenty-six, that we comply with the, the, uh, A C A? Are you doing that?
We're gonna ask for legal opinion on what we can do.
You mean, not, we're considering not stopping it?
Um, well, if, it's already in the plan, so I don't know that you need to do anything. If it's already in the plan, then it just goes for.
But it's already in the plan.
For twenty nineteen.
Up to thirty, it's a.
Well, I think we should change the plan, it's up to twenty-six.
But we have to get a legal opinion.
I don't think we need to, we can, we can change that plan anytime we want to. We don't need it.
It's, it's a state, it's a state law that we have to, um, allow, that people, we have to offer this, but it, it allows us to charge them a premium.
Hold on, does it say we have to offer it, or that we may offer it?
Um.
May, mine is getting, if you can, go for it, it's thirty. So, here's.
Here's where we left it, Mike, was we left it that Patrick's gonna talk to the county attorney's office to see what we could or couldn't do on that issue.
I thought it was the issue was whether or not we cut coverage.
There's more than one issue.
There's more than one issue.
My thing is, is that we've both been around long enough and, and been in the field of labor and going back and forth with the unions. We've both seen enough of these issues to know that if somebody's gonna bring something, we would make sure we're.
Why don't we, why don't we try to cut it off and see what happens? See if anybody complains, otherwise, we got Karen saying.
It, it is, it says, in the statute, it says, any health plan that provides coverage for children shall provide for continuing coverage for, so it says, shall provide for coverage for such children as follows. And then it says up to the age of thirty, but then it has the second part that says that we may, the health plan may require a written election, which we do, and a written, um, and that, and it says we may charge an additional premium for that, but we have to offer the cover.
So, the question is now, we have to offer the coverage, but the question is now, do we have to? If, if, if we were to make that pay for it.
If you offer it, we have to charge a premium, just ask the county attorney that.
That, right.
That's all there is.
So, one question, do we have to?
We have to offer it.
Right.
So, offer it, and do we, can we collect the premium, that's the only, one question.
And they've already told us that what we're doing now is not illegal, but they're also saying that what we can do is charge a premium.
But the question now is from a labor perspective, if I'm, if I'm a labor attorney.
Yeah.
I'm not saying that this is legitimate argument or not, I'm just saying this is coming. If I'm a labor attorney, I'm gonna say, you've done this since two thousand ten, and you have not charged people, and now you're going to.
Okay, I'm gonna cut this off, 'cause we actually went past this issue, we're not on.
And it's one question in difference to ask if we can charge a premium, that's all you have to ask, Patrick, and don't, and don't anticipate the unions up there with burning torches.
Yeah.
Okay.
They will be, but wait.
Okay, stop, we're not on that issue anymore, we're down now to item three, discussion of twenty twenty legislative issue. And Marcos is going to run us through.
Yeah, all right, commissioners, uh, here, I, so what I'm gonna hand out is this. Uh, this is our, where we left off last year, well, this year, where we left, left off, last off, last left off at the end of session. And me, I'll get this out to everybody. And, um, you know what, here, I'm just gonna hand it all out, yeah.
Yeah, clerk's office, I mean, I'll just.
Yep, whatever, yeah, whenever I have extra, no, these are just gonna go to the commissioners, I want the chair to have ones, and then.
But, yeah, I'll, I'll get the. All right, so what I handed out is the Kelly Jerome document is the final report from the end of session.
Kelly Plucker.
Or Kelly Plucker, I'm sorry. Um, that's the final report from the last, from the end of session. We are going in January to enter into the hundred and sixth second session. So, in a nutshell, we had taken a position on seventeen bills to oppose or support, et cetera. Um, we have nine of those bills that are still active, which we will pursue in the next, in the second session, in the short session. So, what I wanted to do today was just open the floor for commissioners to tell me what items would we want to see a senator file a bill on our behalf for? Because we're already gonna, we're, you know, as we've done in the past, as I understand, unless I'm directed differently, we're gonna push those items that we, you know, have already put on the table. Um, and so commissioners have, it, the, the rough list is that documented, just has in blue and black, that's just the listing of all the, all the actual bills that we've taken a position on and who filed them. Uh, those are already out there, those are the items I'm talking about that we're gonna push.
Okay.
So, I'm looking for new stuff, potentially.
Okay, I got it, um, two, one is, I had, the, the core of this request is for us to be able to get juvenile data and analyze it. There is a wrestling match that's, just feel like is going on, and Theresa's supposed to get me, um, the statute, and I don't know what was going on, and, and I don't know it offhand, the bill passes a statute now. Basically, the core, there's about four things in here about who can use juvenile justice data and why, and the intent is to try to save juvenile records from not being there. But here's the issue, I had Teresa Bernard in the Bosch, the deputy police chief Newman, their data person, one of our data persons, Tom Willer, trying to find out a way to do this, and, and Mary vice it from probation. And there's no way to be able to put the data together, analyze it, to be able to solve any of these, these problems. Um, the main thing in here that they think the ask is for is, there's a couple of things that popped up. One is saying that something that the state law restricts this. I ask, can you do it through a confidentiality agreement, and they say, no. The, some of you all came to the presentation we had with the group promise, trying to get that to, it was like a, a brick wall. So, it seems like the only way to get there is a legislative change. Late through, had a meeting a couple of weeks ago in Naco, with people across the state, I brought it up there. Senator Panzey Brooks had some concern, and my point was, I don't want any of the, um, kid data to be there from the record, but right now, it is a probation, say they can't share anything, the police technically say they can't share anything. And I'm like, you can't share, be identified, I mean, and even if you can get there, it's like it's certain people that can handle it. So, I've been having this conversation back and forth, but it needs to be solved, because there was some data presented to us to try to get ahead of the civil citation piece. What, what she did, the data person did was, it's a number that's on every kid. That number is the basis that follows that kid everywhere, so if your number is one, and you come back up, your number is one all the way through, you can pull your number and say, you've been in D C Y C, you've been to the JAG, you've been here, you've been everywhere, and I don't understand what in that number exposes you. Um, and so, the main point is, there gotta be some way to get there, because we will never be able to drive the data strong enough to do what we wanna do with that, so that's, that's the core of that first one. Uh, you know, I've talked to Josh a number of times about it, I've talked to Letha, hoping they can get there. They think there may be some pushback from people to some degree, but I think it's a, an ax that can be worked out. The second one is, so, um, the person asked me to review, remain silent on this, but this is, I think I might mention it to you Thursday, Mike, but this is, first came up to me, the state has an issue with probation and its jurisdiction under the courts. Some of this is wrapped up with Corney and Geneva, it's kinda like when you have good stuff, they put it out, but when they want something, it's this fight with the courts, because it's under there. The question I had with them was back to the home rule argument of saying, look, just give us, put us there by ourselves, so ninety-two counties aren't yelling at us, talking about you making them do this, we're fine with that. They brought up to me the possibility of, now, I don't know if this happens, because there's some negotiation happening, go either way, but the, the verse, the verbiage that I talked to this person about is county boards to take on local control of juvenile justice oversight and supervision. That would mean, you know, there's discussion in there about probation, you have to work out some stuff, that, this is just general everything. And he mentioned, like, you're one-third of the state, one-third of the money comes to you to use. Whatever's being used at Corney and Geneva, boom, one-third comes here. Um, everywhere in the system where there's stuff, it comes here, and just to kinda wrap it around, and my thought, I said, so, what, something like a block grant that the county gets to use to address everything you want to? Because this is the thing right now, which the person made a good point. Every, you have to step deeper in the system to get a service. Um, for instance, four types of kid, uh, kids at detention center now. Pre-adjudic, when they broke it out last time, pre-adjudication, probation, adult, and then there's other characteristics from other states. Probation is paid for by state money. The adult kids on a whole nother deal, but these kids that are sitting there, they're removed, we're talking about trying to get at that with the Sherwood money. But to really get access to services, you gotta get into probation, which is just incentivized. They think if you had the money, we could create a way to get there to some degree. Now, there's an argument pro or con, but I do think in this environment, where you're talking about redoing everything, states in the shakeup for it, and he said the legislature really wants to find a way to get some, uh, to see what's going on accountability with it by taking it and giving it, at least you can get some report on what numbers are and what's going on. It's a, it has some risk, but I think it's something we're talking about to put in the ether. And, uh, they're having a, a, uh, hearing on October seventeenth, just with juvenile justice issues, and about two issues there, and one of the things that, um, um, they wanna have there, some kids with some lived experience based on the meeting that happened earlier. But I just want brings up to the board to see if this needs to get fine-tuned a little bit, that he mentioned Lancaster and Sarpy about it, I'm like, I don't know where they are, I said, is this a bigger discussion that happened, happened with us and the region? Because of some of that stuff that happens to some degree, but, you know, personally, I'm not too scared to go out there on this. Um, because I think there's a lot of questions with Corney and Geneva and where that goes. There's some privacy infrastructure that needs to be there. I asked him, this kinda sounds, it feels like the private should traumatize him, but, but it really isn't, because you're giving to another government entity that will do it at another piece, you know? That's just what I wanna throw out there to see what the stomach was and what needs to be fine-tuned. Because the fact is, you've got a base money, but I don't know if, you know, that money amount can be more or less, and I know, you know, there's past history, but I'm not saying you can't negotiate where to get there. So, that's mine, too.
Commissioner Foyle?
Maybe one of the ways to, uh, as an alternative, to have back in our back pocket on, if you're trying, you're trying to get data on the young people, aren't you? Is that it?
Yeah.
Well, one of the ways may be, uh, and I assume it's for felonies?
No.
Everything?
I don't care about all that, I mean, I just, for instance.
Well, I mean, what's, what's the purpose?
To be able to say, right now, you can just get, uh, the stuff that's in our control, we can tell it was intended. We can get some JAG data, 'cause that's not in our control. But really, probation and where this kid is moving in the court, they're saying that's court data, and they're saying you can't have that.
Okay, well, I was gonna suggest that, um, maybe what we do is, uh, and I don't know if any of these will work, but you could, uh, probably the first one, allowing the county attorney to, uh, compile data and then share it, just the numbers with us, okay? And the other one is, uh, maybe you get, uh, the juvenile court administrator and the Douglas County clerk of the district court to empower them to share the data, uh, like there's eighty-six kids that robbed grocery stores or whatever, whatever it is you're after. Uh, leave it with court personnel, so they don't, 'cause they don't trust us, I'm sure. And, uh, I've had the experience, where I've had to get juvenile data, I actually had to try to close files, because, uh, the place was still looking up kids filed when they were twenty-five, and they were juvenile files, it should've been sealed, and they weren't. And it was just a disaster. And finally, uh, Marty Conway, the prosecutor of the city, uh, got Ernie Chambers to introduce a bill that, uh, if you're not prosecuted within a year of the arrest, that it's expunged, that's wrong, all of them are, adults and everybody. So, anyway, I, I try it, I try it through, working through, uh, somebody like, uh, John Friend or somebody who would be willing to give us the data, but, uh, you know, after it's been filtered, so that the court system and the legislature feels like we're not sitting around a table talking about individual cases.
Patrick? Yeah, I, I've been saying this for quite some time now, is I think that the county, probation should be a county department. I mean, if you look at other jurisdictions where things have really been successful, juvenile justice reform, I think almost invariably, you're gonna find that probation is under the county. Because then you have all these departments that are under the county, and you can, you can better handle it, you can get the information you need, and you can make the changes that you need to make. That's never made any sense to me to have probation be an arm of the court. And I don't think you're gonna make the progress you wanna make until you take over probation.
And, and if you remember, that conversation actually began when there was a kind of a tip, if you will, between at the time Senator Crist and the Chief Heppakim, that he wanted to pull it from out, from under the courts. And we said, yeah, great, put it under us, and, uh, then they.
Came to.
Came to an agreement and just left it where it is, so, um, I think it's a worthwhile initiative for us to pursue. Um, and again, to your point, that for us to make real, um, like impressive juvenile reform, we need to have that arm underneath us, so I think it's worth pursuing, Commissioner Rogers, if that helps. And as far as the data goes, um, do we have the statutes that they are citing or, uh?
Yeah, I tried to get them from Theresa today, and I lost the copy of the gate to me, I can get them and go, because they, they, they premise this on four points, and even, you know, when Mike was saying, uh, this, that, I don't see it happening there, because at least from what was explained to me, and trying to get a read-through, it was about four things, and one of them was like, you can only share it with law enforcement people. So, there was a conversation about the data person O I S, that I had with Willer, and I said, Willer, like, can we find, work out some deal to put this person under you to access the data he was wanting to it? And then, you know, the legal people shot it down, 'cause they didn't feel like it hit there, so I'm like, okay. Then they said, they don't see any way to get around that, you know, I even had a conversation with another deputy chief, and he was like, you should be able to get that for confidentiality agreement, they said, no. Because they, this is thing about law enforcement, now, the county attorney has access to some data, too. But the question is, you still bump into that piece of who can see it and who can't. The other part is that it can be done for research. Well, research tells you something one time in a certain period, I mean, the goal of this is that in today's environment, you should be able to set up something robust enough to where everybody in here, board member, whatever, that deals with this, you should be able to walk in your office, and that's the ultimate goal, to say, these are the number of kids that got arrested last night, this is what it's for, you ain't gotta have no address, they can do that, because if you know the kid and certain deals, you can go back to the specific entities and say, give us what you got on these kids, or dig into this. So, you can't even tell that, you can't, right now, I can't tell you if, and the reason to be able to do this is that they got an idea to some degree, but you can't pinpoint certain stuff of why a kid may be spending thirty days in the courses. What is that particular kid's deal and deed? And, uh, you know, part of it, too, is, I think, is sometimes they, they use that as a point of view, not to give anything out.
Well, and again, you know, data is knowledge, and so the more knowledge we have in moving through this, I think the better. So, whatever statutes there are, that we need to kinda place on the table and look at, let's, you know, really look at them. Any other ju, Commissioner Foyle?
I think I'd only suggest that you talk to some of those people I mentioned, to see if there's a solution. Because they may have, you know, better relations with the court administrator and people like that. Just a suggestion.
Okay. Um, any other, Marcos, I know during board meetings, we kinda throw out some stuff, do you have that?
So, yeah, yeah, I mean, in summary, I, I can say what, what was expressed, maybe some interest, and, and, you know, maybe these are accurate, maybe they're not, um, but all along this, from tracking the summertime, um, ideas such as, uh, sports gambling, um, tweaking the home state exemption statutes, uh, as far as flexibility for deadlines, um, exemptions, uh, et cetera. Um, the state to take over, completely take over the, the crime, uh, or justice system, or, you know, stated, convert it into a state attorney, uh, function system. Um, unfunded mandates, uh, shifts of cost burdens, just in general, how, how can we get a better grasp on, on the last two decades of where we've, those, those unfunded mandates, where we've come from, where we're going? Um, term limits was an example, uh, was an item that came up. I don't necessarily know in what context term limits, but, but, um, tweaking term limits.
I think one thing, another thing, Marcos, that we've talked about that really has raised its importance is that we would want to tell them to, that we would not support any changes to the authority of the public building commissions and, and, uh, being able to raise funds.
Yeah, so, yeah, whi, which is an item, yes, which is an item we are opposing, so, yeah, that's public building commission bond, we are opposing that.
There's also, there could be another, that Ernie might bring his own, right? That might not just be L B twenty, so, anything like that.
Yeah, to pursue that, yeah.
I think both Lancaster and, and Douglas County and their, um, uh, state senators, we think should have a strong opposition.
Hey, hey, Lancaster County was not in this until a couple of days ago. Roma Anderson found out about it, she's been telling the whole. Anyhow, their administrator knew about it, didn't pass it on to their board, they were appalled when they found out, and they will be joining us in the.
Commissioner Foyle? I'd like to make a suggestion on that, if I could, I know you're a true Marcos. I'd like to make a suggestion on that if I could. I know you're a true Marcos, but if we do have, what we ought to do with the L B twenty is that we ought to seek amendment from a friendly. Senator and we we should add in the uh those who have to go to vote of the people, the natural resource district. And uh let's see who else. It's not anybody else that does bonds without voting. And just and let them join us in the fight because they're and you know, the city of Omaha did all that sewer work to two point nine billion dollars without any vote of the people. So. I think what we gotta do is seriously try some kinda defense and say, okay, let's make everybody vote on everything, you know, let's make them vote on the agenda for the legislation. Let's make them vote on. Just a strategy I've used.
Yeah, so and I think that those are valid points that will actually be brought up during that discussion. I really do.
Well, they're doing building renovation right now and they did not intend to vote of the people in Nebraska.
Who?
They rebuilt, they were doing the. And they just redid the dorms.
Right, yeah, like, yeah, 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 yeah. So.
L B twenty.
No, were there any others on that list?
Oh, yeah, one more on the li- uh centralized license plates.
And so and and actually, you know, uh a couple of those that Commissioner Boyle does bring up year after year after year. I really do think we should actually throw it out there. This is a short session, we have to remember, so probably not a whole lot will happen, but. I think if Commissioner Boyle liked the license plate, if he could get a group together to say, let's take a look at this for next session and. Or, you know, the next session because they probably won't do anything this session. But if you could make a point of it, get the group actually working on it rather than. Just us continually throwing it out there and not doing anything, cause I actually think that has some merit to it and it could probably save some money. Um that one and then um the the waiver or the change in the homestead. Um exemption, I really think that that actually, if we came up with language, we could try to get that inserted. Um this year and that's a biggie. So, um Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I I think it ought to be broader than just the homestead. I think we should have. With uh just like with with the homestead, but also on the uh personal property waivers. I mean, you know, maybe some church comes in and. Same sort of thing, you know, some church comes in or somebody's getting taxed or something, not necessarily. I'd just like to have the authority to, and I don't mean to sound quite like it is now and say it, go overrule the assessor. I mean, the thing is, you know how it all works. You don't need anymore talking about it, but I think we ought to do that.
Yeah, I agree. And so this blue page, the or the page that you have in your hand, these are bills that. Were left, correct?
Okay, so that whole, that's the comprehensive list. I only print enough copies for the commissioners um that were in the room. The the reason, oh, okay, you can have mine. Um the the re- the that list there is all the bills we've taken a formal position on to support or oppose. Some of them have already passed, or it was a bill that we're watching or will be, yeah, I'll say. We're we're watching or or may pursue. Because it related to another bill that we have taken a formal position on, you know, based on Sean and I's kind of analysis. So some of those are off the table because it's already, you know, the governors already signed them. Cause that's my comprehensive list. Really today was to look for more new direction. Um L B twenty's still in committee, so at least that's good news for us. Had a hearing, you know, it was one of the first half of hearing, like right off, right out the gate. But again, I but I don't know. I mean, you know, Senator Breezy could wanna pull that out of committee. I don't I don't know.
Right. Okay, so everybody take a look at this list and everything else that we've been given. Um I think that again, being a short session, we have to be very strategic on what we want to take up this year. Um and unfortunately, I think, which in years past, it's kinda like this, but. Um we never get ahead of ourselves in playing offense. It's always defense and I think this year is gonna be a really bad. Year that we have to play. Um and we have to be ready for that. So we can't get too much on our plate. But we have to be paying real close attention to what they're gonna do down there.
I I do have a couple of things I could bring up. One of them is that I saw Senator McDonald. I don't know whether he's serious about this or not, but he was pretty, he's heard a lot of crap about the uh wage increase for commissions. And uh he told me, he said, yeah, that's gonna happen. And I know there's probably gonna be a move to set some other mechanism up to wait uh so that elected officials salaries are set by somebody, I don't know who, but. Uh the man in the moon, I guess. But anyway, I just wanna mention that, that what's gonna come of that, but I'll try to find out. We don't know what we think about. The other thing, I got a couple of things I wanted to mention. Joe is gonna be making a presentation to the county board about the cost of criminal justice. And I I know that we can't get anything done this time, but maybe not the next one, but I, one of the things I think we ought to be thinking about is trying to get. Uh frankly, a major rewrite of the criminal justice code so that it's not so much on, we we ought to take out some of these offenses that send people to prison for for nothing. Low amounts of marijuana and low amounts of this and all that other kinda stuff. And we ought to really try to get them to recognize the. The value and the work that we do trying to trying to repair people. And um we ought to find out, we ought to try to get them to fund that in lieu of this other prosecution slot they're doing and try to get them to refocus. Um I also think that um I'm very concerned about the Department of Motor Vehicles. Uh I don't know what offices they have left in Douglas County. Um I don't think anybody knows, but. Uh I think, it's just hearsay, I guess, but I think they closed the D M V at Fiftieth and L, wherever it is.
I think there's one left, Douglas County and one in Sarpy, right?
Well, there's one on Fifty-Ninth and Ames and there's one on Highway three seventy and Forty-Eighth Street. And so I live at Tenth and Lessworth, so which, I guess I go to Fifty-Ninth and Sixtieth and Ames.
They still have the one, the treasury branch is gone, obviously, but the Hundred and Eighth and Maple D M V is actually still there.
It is?
Yeah.
Well, and where's, so there's three, but they're also gonna close that and build another one out in France. They're gonna be, they're building one at a hundred and, I don't know, Eighty-Eighth and Poplin or someplace. They're closing a Hundred and Eighth eventually. They're gonna close that.
I I think you're, I don't know for sure, but I thought that was part of the plan. I just, but it's still there, I know that.
They're building a big D M V office way out in Hong Kong someplace. Well, not Hong Kong, they're in trouble, France.
We got the right direction, actually. That's west, so, yeah.
When you draw an arc, there's nothing downtown. I mean, it's like, we don't exist, which is about, and I wonder, I bet they have nineteen D M Vs in Lincoln. What do you think?
That, can I interrupt once? Because you're right, the plan though is, is that they have um one. But in the metropolitan, they I I have heard they were gonna have one in each quadrant. Um of a mega center, if you will, for everybody to go to. So whether it be. Um one or three or four or whatever, but they are, they're closing them down bit by bit.
Are they bringing one anywhere near here?
I haven't heard of where they're gonna do it. Um but that's, I know that's their plan is to close them down and have one. One center for everybody to go to.
Do you think we can uh, is there, does anybody know anybody in Lincoln that we can talk to?
Well, I think we need to, we find out what the real plan is before we react. I mean, that would be.
I agree.
Yeah.
But I mean, does anybody know the D M V person anymore?
I do, um uh uh, I don't know, it may not be there anymore. We can find out.
Okay, but I think it'd be important because it's really ridiculous, you know, I don't I don't know if they're trying to, uh you know, you. There, I took my granddaughter out to Millard uh to get her driver's license and it worked out real well, cause she got it and paid for it and we were out of there, you know? But um now I don't think you can do that anywhere, can you?
You can go to Millard's.
Where?
Millard.
But that's closing.
We 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 think. I mean, again, we don't know the whole plan.
Well, I think it's closing. I think there's gonna be one out Hundred and Ninety-Fourth and Poplin and then one over in Sarpy County.
Yeah, that's what I read once, one way west and one way south.
And then uh Fifty-Ninth and Ames.
Well, let's find, Marcos, can you find out from them down there what exactly the plan is so we know how to react?
That'd be helpful before we get the get the torches. Remove those torches, I ordered, will you?
Commissioner Rogers.
Um this this might be crazy, but a little strategic to some degree. I I I think we ought to get somebody to, I don't know if they're gonna put it in already. But you know, it might, we should probably ask them to put in for the two more juvenile judges and two more district judges and push the system.
That is crazy.
Do you have any cases pending before the court?
I just thought it out there. I mean, that's the point. You got one more. Um you're not, I mean, it's built there, you go, you got one more action go around. I I don't know what happens, but I think. You put it on record and you push the system. That's my thought.
Commissioner.
Well, I liked Marcos's letter last year and I forget the terminology you, but said we have like an emergency space crunch in our courthouse right now and nowhere to put them. So, and I mean, yeah, I mean, I'm not saying no.
No, no, I'm not, and I'm not saying that it's a deal. I'm just, I'm just going out there for the strategies purposes. I think there's a way to get there, but I think. Flood the flood zone.
Well, it, I mean, I just know some of the conversations I've had, you know, they they. Bark about the project and then I say, well, okay, so you give us judges where you want to put them. And then they say, oh, I said, well, you're the one who mandates us to provide the space. You know, so again, I think a lot of it though, um and because because of term limits has caused. Uh uh a a knowledge or the expertise that's built up over the years from somebody to be able to really understand. So their first four years, I mean, really honest to gosh, all the issues that they have to learn in their processes. So then their next term, they may start paying a little bit more attention to what other governmental bodies do and how the domino effect is, but then. In their last two years, they're kinda getting ready to, what am I gonna leave with, you know? So there there is a detrimental effect on local government with that. So. Um i- i- I think we also have to do a little better job ourselves of trying to get in there on their first four years of educating them. About county government and the domino effect that does occur from what they do. And so. You know, maybe we can, again, we have the breakfast, but um I think um maybe if we. Pull out my kindergarten, I'll use Mark Craft's derogatory comment about my county government one oh one uh PowerPoint. Which I get nothing but rave reviews on. Except for from Mark. But if we gave that to, I mean, really educate them. I mean, they need to be educated on what what we do. I mean, even though we are a creature, Commissioner Duda and I talk about this all the time, we're a creature of the state, but they don't understand that. And they really don't understand the domino effect. So anyway, those are some things that I think strategically we need to talk about. And try to figure out how to do a better job of as commissioners um singly and as a group. And again, if we had a a PowerPoint or a presentation that everybody could use. Um if everybody's kinda talking the same lingo and not their own. So, Commissioner Boyle?
You know, I I really agree with that and I think that um PowerPoint needs to be really a video and something done professionally that's interesting to watch. It can't just be a bunch of graphs, you know, not nothing against our presentations that we get from various places, but anyway. Uh it would be better if it were a video. I think Marcos paid for that, obviously, I don't think it's for free. And the other thing is that um. I I, these breakfasts are okay and they show up and everything else, but you know what I think we really need to do is one of two things, either. Uh we need to have some kind of an event here in Omaha, whether it's a college world series game or it's a combined with a trip to the zoo and. Uh we need to bring the senator and his or her spouse in and um, you know, um. And treat them to a some time in Omaha overnight and take them to some fun places at the same time educating them on things. Do some tours with the senators and spouses can come if they want. But I mean, we really need to think about this and we need to do a professional presentation. Cause I've been over corrections and all you get is about, maybe you're lucky if you get four. And um, you know, and and we took them to the health center, the biggest comment, most frequent comment I got is we don't have anything like this in our town. Well, of course you don't. But, you know, they don't have any anything at all. I mean, the restaurants are closed all across the state. But I mean, I think. That's what we need to do, you know, and I think they're surprised by the numbers and, but I think I'd like us to talk about that and consider it. The other thing I'd like us to do too, and I know. Claire's gonna fall back and get his head on the wall back there, but I'd like us to have another one of these, uh which we haven't had for years. Uh kind of a um uh group, a thing where we have the county board committee and ask the open public. And we talk about items on the, that we deal with all the time and try to, try to get something resolved on what where we are, how to be going and stuff.
We we are actually, yeah, we are getting that put together.
Okay, yeah. And funny, there was one real weird uh thing that I mentioned to Marcos. Actually, kinda, I don't know if I told anybody else, but one of the things I noticed, he did a whole bunch of work on it too, it looks pretty, well, it's those license plates. You know, the uh in Missouri, they have really great uh in transit stickers and it. I had a couple cops tell me this a long time ago. You can't read them, you know, they go on the back of these windows that are darkened. And all you can see is kind of square of something white. You can't read them.
Ours, ours, yeah, the Nebraska.
They're worthless. And um they also are screwy. If they put them on your car, you have a hell of a time scraping them off. If you make a mistake and scrape off the electric thing in the back window, you don't have a defroster anymore. But Missouri has some really great things. They've got, and I don't know how they get them out or how they do, but they they have uh two things that are really interesting. One is. Uh uh an in transit sta- thing that you can read. It's got readable numbers, not handwritten. And they, where the license plate goes, and so a cop, law enforcement can actually see what it is, okay? That's a good law enforcement. The second thing is. That the police, uh their license plates are all the same and guess what they say? Police. And the sheriff, it says sheriff. So every year, they don't have to change the plates, you know, and the other thing I'd really like to see is what the post office does, you know, they have no plates. They have no license plates on the mail trucks at all. They got a like six, eight digit number of, you know, and I don't know who gives them the authority to do that. So I mean, why are we, why do we have plates on our cars? Why do we take all that time?
We we do look at the postal service and I did talk to Tim Kavanaugh about that, but that's just federal law. Tim Kavanaugh about it. That's just federal law, so if we tried to force them to get tags, they would just say, no, federal statute. We're not gonna do it.
I don't want, I don't want to force them to get tags. I want us to not have to get tags. It's the reverse. Yeah, I'm not trying to force them.
So, but yeah, those other ones, e- exactly. So Missouri has, they issue sixty day tags. I I maybe ours are thirty or something like that. Okay, so Missouri and Kansas, they issue, from what I understand, they they issue sixty day tags and they're kind of a um. Plastic type, you could almost recycle it. It's like a cheap tag that you would get at like an auto dealer, like with their brand on it or whatever. But anyway, they and they just put in a number there and it goes on where your metal plate would go. And it's super, you know, able to be seen, I guess.
If anybody doesn't have a difficulty with it, I'll I'll go to Nico and ask him if they have any interest and talk to the sheriffs and law enforcement before I try to force them. I'm trying to force them, but I think it's a lot more, it saves a lot of trouble, I think, with cars getting stopped and things, okay?
I agree, yeah. Okay, anything else?
Yeah, can I add for the record? So Teresa just sent me this, the statue is forty-three dash two. And then it's comma one oh eight dot zero five, sealing of court records. I, when I can add anybody in, I'll seal you what, send you what she sent me and she highlighted some pieces. And um, you know, just by quickly looking at this, it it has all systems people that can do it. And I think there's some ways to get in there because it just says basically the data is to be seen by everybody in there and then, cause it has some stuff in there like. You can't be given to the public. So I'm assuming that's what they're resting on, but the stuff that'll be given is like. I'm assuming anecdotal stuff, it's not detailed, so that's the statue.
Okay, great. Marcos?
Okay, so I guess so my direction from the board, I guess what I'm gonna do, if if Commissioner Rogers is fine with this, I will type up the. Like one, two, three, four, five, six, maybe like we have six new, six new items. We'll wanna pursue something like that. But but like type them up, show them to the chair and then we'll have another like committee or take it to the board, whatever you wanna do. Okay, cool.
And I had mentioned something and I don't remember what it was to you at one of our board meetings, maybe six or eight weeks ago.
Okay.
And I didn't hear it read back today.
Okay, which is?
I don't remember what it was.
Okay, maybe I will, okay. Wasn't gambling, it wasn't?
That was Mike.
Yeah.
Does it have something to do with Viagra?
Mike, Mike, we know you want to be able to get through Viagra.
Okay, we are slowly around, whichever way you wanna look at it, we're down.
I got it, I I agree with that.
We are a germ.